Welcome to the September 13th, 2021 Select Board Meeting. In accordance with an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law by Governor Baker, tonight's Select Board Meeting will be conducted remotely via Zoom and will not be open to the public for physical attendance. The meeting is being recorded, livestreamed, and cable broadcast by the Eastern Community Access Television, which is Comcast 98 and Verizon 23, and on ECAT's website, www.eastoncat.org. This meeting is closed captioned for the hearing impaired. If you're watching on your computer, you'll see a CC button at the toolbar on the bottom of your screen. If you're watching at home and you have a question or a comment, you can always email the Assistant Town Administrator, Michael Blanchard, at mblanchard@easton MA.us, or pose your question on the Q&amp;A feature of the Zoom portal if you're on the Zoom meeting. Please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board Member to state their name to ensure we have a quorum.
Craig Barger.
Mark Lamb.
Jamie Stevins.
Jennifer Stacy.
And I'm Doty Full Genetti. Welcome, everyone. I see that tonight, we're going to be having a joint meeting with the Finance Committee that's going to start at 7 o'clock. And I know that we have a couple of members that are in the participants section. So if people are joining, they will be in the participants section until we get to that portion of the meeting. And for other people that will be joining, we have you in the participants section until it's your time to speak during an interview. So I'll probably mention that a couple of times as more people join, but just to let people know. The first item that we have at 6:00 PM is a public hearing for an application on a new Section 12 General On-Premises Wine and Malt Beverages License and Common Victualers License for Tucker Custom Crafts. And Craig, will you read the public hearing notice, please?
Of course. "Select Board of Easton as Licensing Authorities will hold a public hearing by remote participation using the Zoom platform on Monday, September 13th, 2021 at 6:00 PM to consider an act upon the application of Tucker Custom Crafts LLC for a new Section 12 General On-Premises Wine and Malt Beverage Beverages License and Common Victualers License for premise located at 3 Roach Brothers Way, Unit B, Easton, Mass., with a plan on file at the Select Board's office."
So I don't see either of the applicants in the... Or am I looking in the wrong place? Hold on a second. I was looking at the Q&amp;A. We do have them. Can we move them into this section?
Good morning, Board. My name is Mark Ross. I represent... I'm an attorney. I represent Tucker Custom Crafts LLC and Lynn and Brian Tucker.
Great. Thanks for joining us, Attorney Ross.
You're very welcome. And they are supposed to be here. I don't know where Lynn and Brian Tucker are, so.
We're here.
Your camera is not working.
Yeah, we're just trying to... I'm trying to turn it on and... I don't know. It's a microphone's working, but it won't let me unclick the camera. Oh, right there.
Oops, sorry.
Oh, there we go.
There we go. Sorry.
Great. Good to see you. So if you would like to tell us a little bit about your new company that just started in Easton and use this as an opportunity, we've got lots of viewers, so please tell us everything about what you're doing there and your thoughts on Easton so far.
Well, so far, Easton has been wonderful. We've had a lot of people come in. We actually had a gentleman across the street. He came over and gave me a $20 gift card and said, "Welcome to the neighborhood." Wow. It was very sweet. Yes, yes. We've had the Lions Club come through. So we're a DIY craft studio. We're a little different in the way that... The way that we work, we're not classroom or workshop-based. You can come in anytime and make a craft. We're family-focused, so we have crafts for kids. We have crafts for adults. And we do everything from signs to acrylic pours. We have a splatter room in the back, which is very popular. We suit up and throw some paint on a canvas. We've had families. We even had an assisted living group from Dorchester come in, wheelchairs and all in the splatter room. It was great. It's been really good so far.
Well, that's wonderful, and I'm glad that tells us that you're ADA accessible, so that's good for the public to know that you're welcoming to people with different abilities. So awesome. So you're looking for a liquor license and the Common Victualers license. I looked at your resume and, you know, your information. A lot of paperwork that you have to do to get through this. And I noticed that you have Safe Serve for food and alcohol. I just wanted to know your experience with that a little bit.
I don't have experience with... I've never worked as a bartender or waitress, but I did do all of my certifications, my tip certifications, Safe Manager. We did the choking and CPR certifications. So that's like the extent of my certifications.
Sure. And do you have... Will you have people working for you?
Yes, and I do have... Two out of my four employees are already... One is a former restaurant manager. She just retired after 35 years, so she's all certified. And one of my part-time employees is certified. And then I figured if we do get approval, I will have the rest of my staff certified as well.
Okay. I think it's important, we say this to everyone that comes before us for a liquor license, we are a college town, and we care very, very much about compliance with the liquor laws. We do have compliance checks once a year, and those are basically... Someone will come in, they'll try to purchase alcohol. They'll be asked if they have an ID. If they don't, and they get served, then we have some challenges there. The worst board we don't like to do is we don't like to suspend anybody's liquor license. And every time it happens, it's usually, you know, it was a new person, or there's always a reason that's, you know, one of those things, but really, really be careful with that because, you know, of course, you don't want to have that happen, so.
Right.
Here that you'll have your employees trained.
Oh, absolutely.
And I'm Brian Tucker, and I have actually... I worked at a liquor store all through college in a college town, as well as I used to be a bartender at the Lantana over in Randolph.
Oh, okay. Great. So let me ask if any of the Board members have any questions or comments, Craig?
I don't have a question, but I do... I did have an opportunity to talk with a former employer of yours, Lynn, who had really nice things to say about you as a very diligent person and very well organized, and that was Ray Cronin.
Oh, okay.
So welcome to Easton.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mark. Mark is the Chair of our Economic Development Council, so he's definitely a name that you'll see and want to get to know.
Okay.
How you guys doing today?
Good. How are you?
Good. Well, welcome to the community. Welcome to the business community. Sounds like you're off to a good start. And I have no questions. I wish you luck. If down the line, we want to do any sort of events or involve the town, please, by all means, reach out to me. And we couldn't be more supportive of all business in town, so we want you to succeed. And anything I can do or we can do to help you succeed, let us know.
Great. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Jamie?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so Brian, I think you were gonna mention that your experience... You've run up against and had certainly many situations that you've been able to prevent underage folks being served. So I think that's what you were alluding to, is your experience there and knowing how to identify that.
Exactly. I mean, the rule of thumb that we always use was that if they didn't look like they were 35 years old or older, then you better be, you know, asking for an ID and then checking the ID, looking for the... You know, making sure that it has the... I forget what you call it, the...
Collage.
The seal. It changes colors when you look for it. And also the types of IDs, too, to make sure that it has to be a state-certified, you know, a state-issued or federally-issued license or passport or something like that.
Great. Now, I trust you'll train folks well with that knowledge, too, so thank you. We look forward to... And it's great to have you guys in town.
Thank you.
And Jen?
No questions. Just thank you so much for choosing to bring your business to Easton. This is really exciting, and I've heard a lot of really positive chatter on social and whatnot, so congratulations. And for the record, I'm at that age where I love being carded, so it's never a bad thing at a certain point.
Well, I was gonna add that the older that I get, the younger everybody looks, so... I can't tell ages, so everybody would be carded, because I can't... You know, I can't figure it out just by looking at you.
I live in higher red, and I keep on getting older, and they all stay the same age, and it's a weird thing.
Right. Well, to me, you look like you're about 12, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, so just for some of the formalities, this public hearing notice was posted, advertised, and mailed to a butters. The application has been circulated to town departments with no concerns. Pinstaration had its grand opening last month and is currently open for crafts and food service. So this application is specifically to add wine and beer service and with no other concerns. Connor, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that, or?
No. So this is a sort of basically like a restaurant license, but Common Victualers License is separate for any place that would have a place for folks to sit and consume this. I believe our office has checked. We do have sufficient on-premise licenses still available, so you're not running out of them, although there are fewer and fewer. That should increase slightly once the decennial census is done, as the amount of licenses in the community are tied to that, so.
Great. And so do you want... This should be two separate votes, Connor? You want one for the common vic and one for the liquor?
Sure, but just about liquor as a beer and malt.
Okay. So if somebody would like to make a motion, before I do that, Attorney Ross, did you have anything that you wanted to say, or?
No, you guys have covered everything, and if there are any questions I had about... If you had about the application or the structure of the business I'd be happy to talk about, but if not, then... Although, I am one who no longer gets carded, and so I miss getting carded. It's the gray hair. Once you get gray hair, it seems like you never get carded again.
All right. Well, thank you so much. So if somebody would like to make a motion to approve the application for the General On-Premises Wine and Malt Beverage License?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. And if somebody would like to make a motion to approve the Common Victualers License for Tucker Custom Crafts?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger, back to you. Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. So congratulations. I'm gonna do a shameless plug and notice and make a mention that you are listed in the Discover Easton app.
Oh, yes, we talked about that.
So if anybody is looking for more details on any of the businesses in town, go to the Discover Easton app, so I sound like an infomercial.
We actually had somebody come in. We had a walk-in come in on Saturday who said that they'd seen it on the app.
Oh, that's terrific. Well, congratulations. Welcome to Easton. We wish you continued success.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Have a good night.
Bye. Thank you.
You as well.
Thanks.
All right. So next, we're gonna do the application for a change of manager for the 99 restaurants?
Sure. So attached, I believe you have information associated with a change of manager for the alcohol license associated with 99 restaurants on Belmont Street, to change from Anthony Santucci to Brittany Yerid, I believe. Brittany, I apologize if I got that incorrect, but Brittany is here. If the Board has any questions, these are relatively standard ABCC documents required anytime one of your licensees changes their manager. The town has no concerns with this transaction.
Okay, great. Hi, Brittany. Thanks for being here tonight.
Hi, how are you?
Great. So I guess what I would want to say is if you were here and you saw the last presentation, we really care a lot about the liquor licenses. To my knowledge, we haven't had any issues with that with the 99, but just as a reminder to you, we are a college town, so we want to make sure that everybody on your end is properly carding and ensuring that no one under 21 is served, and I'm sure that you will be doing a great job with that as well. Do you have... Do you have any questions for the Board?
I do not. All my managers are Sir Safe Alcohol Certified, as well as Manager Certified, and all of my team members as well take a course, the Responsible Service of Alcohol, and they have an exam at the end, so my team is very well aware, being across the street from Stonehill. And I also was a bartender at that same restaurant five years ago before I got promoted, and now I'm back again.
Oh, that's great.
Very excited about it.
Very good. Any comments from you, Craig?
No, I have no questions or comments.
Mark?
No questions or comments.
Jamie?
Just the proper pronunciation of your last name.
It was perfect, actually. It's Yerid.
Good. I was hoping to call Connor out.
It's a long agenda tonight. You'll have an opportunity, I'm sure.
And any questions?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Okay, so we would need a motion to accept the application for the change of manager for the 99 restaurant from Anthony Santucci to Brittany Yerid.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger, Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. So congratulations on the new position, Brittany, and we wish you best in your new position.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Okay. Next, we do have a heavy agenda tonight, so I will be trying to get through some of these quickly. If we get to 7 o'clock and I don't notice, Craig, you need to flag that, because that's... We have the joint meeting. Next is a Commission on Disabilities appointment, and that's for Matt Riley. Is Matt here?
I believe Elizabeth let us know that he could not make it tonight. Let me double-check that.
Nope, you're right. I actually have a note right in front of me that I did that. Let me just...
Yes, he had a family matter, couldn't... Could not make it, but still wishes to be considered.
So I'm the Select Board Representative to the Commission on Disabilities, and I have to say, since I've been serving on that committee for about a year, it's really been tremendously eye-opening for me. I've learned so much from the people on that committee. Very, very interesting group to be with, so we've been trying to fill this position for a little while, and Matt is an Executive Director of a Residential Education Program, serving individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. He has many years of experience in the field and would like to become more active in the local community. He moved to Easton about a year ago and would love to help out the town. And let me see, he's worked to secure zoning and planning approvals for his prior company in Pennsylvania and just recently joined a Public Health Committee as a community member. He has a doctorate in psychology and board-certified in behavioral analysis and served as an executive director for over five years and run his own company. So he's very well credentialed, and I think that he sounds like he would be a really great fit for this commission. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
Very impressive background.
Exactly.
Echo that. Very impressive.
Okay. If somebody would like to make a motion to appoint Matt Riley to the Commission on Disabilities with a term expiration of June 30th, 2024?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Back to you, Craig.
Barger, Riley.
Lamb, Riley.
Evans, Riley.
Stacy, Riley.
And Full Genetti, Riley. So just in case Mr. Riley looks at this, you'll be hearing from our town clerk about how to get sworn in and the other information about joining that commission.
We skipped over item five, I believe.
Oh, gee. Sorry about that. We'll go back to the one-day liquor license for Stonehill College, the Farley Event, Martin Auditorium at Stonehill College. Stonehill has applied for a one-day all-alcohol liquor license for the advancement of the Farley Event Anniversary Celebration to be held on Saturday, October 9th, 2021, in the Martin Auditorium at Stonehill College from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. An Easton Police Detail is not required for this event. Any questions from the Board?
No, I have none.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to award that one-day liquor license for October 9th, 2021, as noted in the agenda?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. All right. Thanks, Connor. Next, the Council on Aging Appointment with Matt Soldner for a term expiring on June 30th, 2022.
I believe Mr. Soldner's here, and he's being moved into the panel.
So while Matt is getting... Coming on board, I just want to read the charge of the Council on Aging. It's the town department that provides or coordinates programs to meet the needs of Easton residents aged 60 or older. Services are provided with funding from municipal taxes, state, and federal grants, along with private donations and volunteer services. Because of this support, many of the programs are offered free or at nominal charge to our elderly residents. The Easton Council on Aging publishes a monthly newsletter, The Coordinator, which is distributed throughout town and is mailed or emailed to Easton elderly and interested residents upon request. This newsletter includes information on programs and recreational activities, as well as important topical information for seniors. So Matt, we see that you can speak, but we don't have...
Oh, picture? Oh, well, quite good. Well, I am here. I am... Well, there we are. I have... I'm old. What can I say? I figured that'd be good for the Board. I'm no longer with the Lions, so I have plenty of time on my hands.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for stepping up and volunteering to do this. Any questions from the Board?
I have none.
The only question... Well, you know, so you said you were with the Lions, and now you're not with the Lions anymore, and it looks like you want to pour your time into this. So what about this council drew you to it?
Well, I just... I've been a volunteer most of my life. I mean, I... You're too young to remember. I don't think anybody there was in the town back in the late 60s, early 70s, when we put together a youth center at St. Mark's Church. I worked with Lee Williams on that and a lot of other people, but I went from the J.C.'s to the Lions, so I've been involved in pretty much everything.
Dude, just fulfilling the circuit.
During all my time.
That's great. Well, you know, it sounds like you have energy and you have a passion for service in the community, and this is your next stop in your journey, so it sounds great to me.
Okay, thank you.
Jamie, any comments or questions?
No, likewise. I thank you for stepping up to be part of the committee, so thank you.
I just want to hear everybody pronounce my name on the table.
And Jamie? I mean, I'm sorry, Jennifer?
No, no questions. Just also thank you for taking the time to put yourself out there for volunteering.
Well, Matt, you know, I know you, and I know that you are such a dedicated volunteer, and you put in 100% on everything you do, and really excited for you to join the Council on Aging. Easton is an age-friendly community, and we're working on several initiatives to really advance the focus on some of those activities. And I think that you're going to be a really great asset to that committee.
Thank you.
So if somebody would like to make a motion to nominate... I mean, not nominate, to appoint Matthew Soldner... Did I say it right?
You did.
Okay. To the Council on Aging with a term expiration of June 30th, 2022.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Back to you, Craig.
Barger, Soldner.
Lamb, Soldner.
Evans, Soldner.
Stacy, Soldner.
And Full Genetti, Soldner.
Pretty good.
Thank you so much, and the town clerk will reach out to you about getting sworn in and the schedule for the meetings.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
You. All right. Yeah, 6:25. Next is an appointment of Constable for David Martel with a term expiring June 30th, 2024.
Sure. So this is actually a constable who had served two previous three-year appointments appointed by the Select Board, but who did not have paperwork in during the normal reappointment process during the month of June. This has come in more recently over the summer, and paperwork's been reviewed by the Treasurer Collector, as well as the Chief of Police, either of whom had any concerns with the Board reappointing Mr. Martel, so our office recommends that you do so.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to appoint David Martel as a constable with an expiration term of June 30th, 2024?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, Martel.
Lamb, Martel.
Evans, Martel.
Stacy, Martel.
And Full Genetti, Martel. Terrific. Next up, we have a contract award for Stiles Company for supply and delivery of cold water meters for contract WAT 2022-01.
Sure. So DPW Director Dave Field is here for this item and the next, if he could be moved into the panel. But in your packet, there is a memo from Director Field for both. This is for the supply of cold water meters throughout town for Water Division, and it is funded through the Water Operations Budget. If the Board has any more particular questions, Dave is here to help out with that.
Hi, David.
Good evening.
Thanks for being here.
Good evening, David.
So I think Connor summed it up. We did a bid for the Stiles Company for cold water meters, and we had one bidder, the Stiles Company, and we recommend a word.
So we do some of these every year? Is that it, or?
Yes, we typically do a bid every year. This year, it's the first year that Jack Marsh hasn't been here, so we kind of retooled it a little bit, and we're gonna do a three-year contract where we have the ability to extend for two more years after this year.
And is this so that the water... Or I don't know if it's the water department, or they can drive by and read the meters electronically? Am I... Or am I thinking of something else?
Well, no, you're partially right. So water meters are very important. That's how we get the revenue to support the efforts of the Water Division. So it's important to change our meters every... Basically, every 10 years, we try to have a new meter in every property every 10 years. So this is just an ongoing effort to take those properties, make sure the meters are up to date, so we don't have any issues with under-recording or over-recording. We have accurate billing. The new meters do have cellular capability, so they don't require us to drive around and do the radio reads, and we can get... We'll get those communicated to us every night, and the residents all have the ability to log on and get alerts if there's usage or leaks or things like that directly.
That's great. I know that we got a notice a few years back about a leak that we were flagged as using unusual amount of water, and we did have a leak in one of our sprinkler heads, so I think that's really helpful. Anybody have any comments or questions for David on this?
David, just a quick question. You said that you don't have to drive around anymore. You can just... Because it's done visually, is that what you just said? I'm sorry.
Yes, for the newer meters, these meters that we're buying now are cellular, so we don't have to go around, but we still do drive the routes to get the radio read meters. Eventually, we'll be all to cellular, and we, you know, we'll just have quicker information at our fingertips.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Mark?
I do have a quick question. David, it's nice to see you not directing traffic on Main Street. For those who don't know, I was driving home from work. I'm sorry, I gotta share this. I was driving home from work the other day, and Dave isn't just here in the meeting doing this. He's literally directing traffic on Main Street to get the project done, so he's the type of guy who... He doesn't hide in his office. By all means, he gets out there, and he's actually literally doing the work, so I thought that was great, Dave. But my question is, how many meters does 200K get you?
We're doing about 700 a year. So 700 is the typical, you know, typical household meter, and then we have other items in there for larger meters for different commercial properties.
Okay. And just so, you know, for the people at home, I think the normal process is you send out a letter that tries to set a date so that the water department will come and they install them in the homes, and that's really it. And that's it as far as, you know, the resident participating goes. And then you mentioned you can... A resident can log on. Where can the residents log on? How do they do that?
So everyone that gets one of the new meters has given a little information card, and it shows you how to set up an account and how to access it. So right now, we got about a quarter of the town is with the cellular meters, so they have that ability to log on. If anyone has any... If anyone has any questions or they're concerned or they've lost that information, they can just contact the Water Division, they can guide them and through that process.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Mark stole my question. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Jen?
Same. Thank you, Dave.
Some nights, we're going to have to mix it up and have you two go first because I remember when I was first on the board, you're last on the list, everybody asked your questions. So thank you for that. So if anybody would like to make a motion to award this contract W A T 2022-01 to Styles Company for supply and delivery of cold water meters in the amount of $199,703.40.
So moved, Barger.
Second lamb.
Barger Lamb, back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devin's, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Thank you. Next is the Contract Award for Energy Source LLC for LED light, the LED lighting project at Fire Station Number Three and Police and Fire Station Number One. It's contract DPW 2022-06. David, you want to tell us about this one?
Sure, so as you know, we're a green community and we've just received our sixth grant for green communities, bringing our total of grant awards to just over $1 million. So the latest round is for LED retrofit of Fire and Police One, Fire One and Police Station and Fire Station Three with Energy Source, who we worked with on our last project as a subcontractor to the utility companies. We're allowed to contract with them directly for energy conservation measures and I recommend we award the contract to Energy Source.
Terrific. Any questions? Craig?
I just, David, I'm very, very impressed with the amount of grants that you and your folks have been able to access for this town without a designated grant writer. And I think that people in town ought to recognize that and applaud the work that you guys do to, to benefit the entire community. So thank you for that, David.
Appreciate that.
Mark?
Thank you as well, Dave. This sounds, this sounds great. I'm looking forward to the next grant that you, you come up with, but as for now, this is outstanding.
Jamie?
Yeah, just second what Craig said, because I know that can be another full-time job, just the grant writing and for the high success rate that, that you've had and your teams had, that's extremely impressive and I agree, I hope the town is aware of that and all the hard work you do to, to help improve this town, so thank you.
Thank you.
And Jen?
I agree with Craig and Mark and Jamie. Just phenomenal work with the grant process and the success of the submissions and continuing to do the right thing when it comes to sustainability in Easton, so thank you so much, Dave.
Thank you.
And for my two cents, I'll just say that Easton was an early adopter of green community, so we've been doing this for a while and you know, it's, it's a lot of work to get the grants, but it's also something that people don't normally think of is it's a lot of work, once you get the grant, you have to do reporting and you know, all the procurement and making sure that it goes right and everything, so it doesn't really end at, it's exciting to get the money, but then you have a lot of work to do after that, so we appreciate you and your staff taking on the opportunities, knowing that it is increasing the workload too. So if somebody would like to make a motion to award the contract DPW 2022-06 to Energy Source LLC for the LED lighting project at Fire Station Number Three and Police Station Number One in the amount of $76,188.70.
So moved, Barger.
Second lamb.
That's Barger and Lamb, back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devin's, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. So thanks so much. Good to see you, David.
Thank you, David.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, next we have discussion and vote for request to use Stonehill Gift Funds for the Human Rights Committee Interactive and Collaborative Diversity Art Project. We do have a memo in our packet from the Human Rights Committee requesting approval to use some of the money from the Stonehill College Gift Fund to support this interactive project for the NRT Harvest Fair. Is some, is somebody here from HRC or is it you, Craig?
No, I think Amy Gershman was scheduled to present.
I don't see her in the list of attendees.
Our notes indicate that she was invited.
Okay.
But I'm unsure if there was a confirmation there. Craig, could we ask you to fill in? You're muted.
I'd be happy to, to present. Once again, the Human Rights Committee has put together a project, an interactive project at the NRT on October 3rd. The, similar to past years, the goal is for, offer an interactive event for people of all ages, which aligns with the message of the Human Rights Committee. And I'm just going to read the, the mission again, just so that people at home can, can know that it's promote Easton's vision of a community that has its core values, freedom from bigotry, hatred, intolerance and disrespect. To build a stronger, more unified town that respects and recognizes both our diversity and our commonalities. To work with community groups and agencies to educate and to promote understanding and eliminate prejudice and intolerance and to confront statements and actions that conflict with the core values expressed above. The, the interactive is, as you can see in the, in the picture with the, with the, with the wings and it is an opportunity for people to, to color in, it'll be paper instead of, instead of actual feathers, just in case it rains so that it doesn't, it don't get soggy. But it is a pretty impressive group of people on the Human Rights Committee who really value diversity and like to see the community get involved. And if you, if you see, to see the picture of the, the young woman standing with the, with the different colored feathers, and there will be a statement at the top, I'm not sure what the statement is going to be this time, but it is a statement that relates to diversity and inclusion. And all of the events that the HRC have done historically at the NRT have been very well attended and very appreciated by the community.
Great, thanks, Craig. Mark, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, you know, thank you to the HRC for everything they've done. They've really found their way in these past couple of years and amazing things for the town of Easton. How much, how much is, are you, are you looking for from the Stonehill Fund?
At the moment, $527.
$527, you said?
$527, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. That's it.
Jamie?
Yeah, thank you. I was just looking at both breakdown and that picture and I love the, the photo op that that creates for folks. I think that's beautiful. Thanks.
And Jen?
Every year, the Human Rights Committee does such a great job with their installations at the NRT and they're so memorable and so impactful, so I think this falls in line beautifully with what has been done over the past several years.
I agree that you have some really, really creative people on that committee and they really go all out for these, these big interactive projects and I look forward to them every year because it's always something different and big, you know? And I think that the interactive portion of that, whether it's from children or adults of all, you know, backgrounds and abilities and ages and it really is an important community event, so I'm looking forward to seeing that. I looked at the budget and I think it looks like it's really, it's shaved as close as it could be to prices and I think what I'd like to do is make it a little bit higher than that because if, since, you know, if there's any little, you know, detail, I mean, this is down to things that are $2 and $4, so I think I'd want to round it up to $600 just to have that flexibility in there, so if there, if it runs into a little bit of a snag, it doesn't put anybody in a bind. I'm not saying you have to use it all, but at least to give a little bit of a cushion in that.
I, speaking on behalf of the Human Rights Committee, I'd be very happy to accept the $600 instead of the $527.
Yeah, I mean, this breakdown is down to $5 pieces, $2. I mean, they're, they are cutting it very close.
Right. So, but, but that said, I really appreciate the thought that goes into a budget like this and sometimes, you know, not for this, but other things in my world, I'll see a budget and it's like, wow, that's, you know, that's seems to be a little overinflated and I feel like this is really, there was a lot of thought that went into this for accuracy, so if nobody minds, I would take a motion to award $600 to the Human Rights Committee up to $600 from the Stonehill Grant Funding, or Stonehill Gift Funding that we have.
So moved, Barger.
Second lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb, back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devin's, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. All right, terrific. Next is an acceptance of a gift to the Eastern Police Department and Eastern Fire Department from Stephen and Carol Green.
Sure, so attached to my board's packet, you will find memos from each of the respective chiefs outlining the generous donations from Mr. and Mrs. Green who have donated $1,000 each to each of these agencies, so 1,000 to Police and 1,000 to Fire as well as thank you letters that have gone to the family from each chief. As with any municipal gift, the board has to vote to accept it, so the chiefs have requested and I echo their request of a board vote to accept these gifts to the Police and Fire Department. They would go into the donation account from the Police Department, which is a flexible account that can be used for future needs of a Police Department, things such as training and for the Fire Department, it is intended to support safety initiatives and training for firefighters, children, seniors and other community-based events. And so we thank the Green family for their generosity.
Perfect. Craig, any comments, questions?
If I'm not mistaken, I think this is, the Green family has done this before for the Police and Fire over the last few years, as I recall. Is that, is that not correct, Connor?
I recall that as well, Craig. It seems like they're, they're very generous every year with these departments and we're very thankful.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Perfect. Mark, did you have anything to add, or?
Just thank you. We are, we are honestly very thankful guys, the Fire Police, go above and beyond and this isn't just, it's not just the dollar amount, it's the statement that they're making, so I appreciate it.
Jamie?
Agreed. Thank you very much. I think it's one of those things a lot of us think about, reaching into our own pockets to support, you know, our departments and this is, this is wonderful, so thank you very much.
And Jen?
Agreed. Just would like to echo the gratitude to Mr. and Mrs. Green for their generosity, the community. Thank you.
Excellent, and I will add my gratitude to, to the list here and I, I also like the perspective that you said, Mark, it's, you know, the dollar amount is very generous, but the recognition and the thought process to recognize our first responders is definitely very well-received. So with that, I would take a motion to accept the, the generous gifts from the Green family for the Fire and Police.
So moved, Barger.
Second lamb.
Barger and Lamb, back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devin's, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Great. Okay, item 13. We have a discussion and vote, a Community Preservation Committee request for the removal of an absentee committee member, Matthew Craig. So we did get a letter in our packet and Jim Lee, the Chair of the Community Preservation Commission, has been trying to reach out to Mr. Craig for a while and hasn't been able to reach him or get a response and it's causing a problem with quorums. This happens from time to time and, you know, we, we, it really gets hard to meet if, if somebody can't make it to the meeting, so I know that Jim did try to reach out several times and this would be the final step is having to request the removal of the member. So anyone have any questions? All right, so this will be a roll call vote. If somebody would like to make a motion to remove member Matthew Craig from the Community Preservation Committee?
So moved, Barger.
Second lamb.
Barger and Lamb, back to you, Craig.
Barger, Craig.
Lamb, Craig.
Devin's, Craig.
Stacy, Craig.
And full Janetti, Craig. And we thank Mr. Craig for the time that he did serve and was able to serve on that committee. And that, that will mean that there's going to be another opening and that will be posted on the website in the volunteer section, so if people are interested in that. So next is the acceptance of a resignation from Charlie Mello from the Conservation Commission. His term expired on June 20, expires June 30th, 2024. We do have a memo from Mr. Mello that he is unable to continue serving on that commission. He is, you know, somebody who volunteers and has his hand up to join committees and has been a real great contributor to that committee, so I would like to express our gratitude to Charlie for serving and we will be advertising for the vacancy, which has a term expiration of June 30th, 2024. So we would need to vote to accept this resignation. Can I get a motion to accept the resignation?
So moved, Barger.
Barger and Lamb, and it's a roll call vote.
I just want to say that I hope that Charlie comes out of this illness, so so with regret, Barger, Mello.
Lamb, Mello.
Devin's, Mello.
Stacy, Mello.
And full Janetti, Mello. And with regret, we accept that resignation. So we are coming up a little shy of 7 o'clock. We'll skip to the minutes. We have minutes here that are dated August 23rd, 2021. Has everyone had a chance to read them and does anyone have any questions or comments on those? If not, I would take a motion to accept the minutes of August 23rd, 2021.
So moved, Barger.
Second lamb.
So it's Barger and Lamb, back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devin's, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. So I guess we could take a 10-minute recess and come back at 7 o'clock and unless we, Connor, is there anything else that you want to?
You, we could try to see if counsel is available on short notice to squeeze the executive session in now. That might be a little tight, but if Attorney Kenneth Fick is available, that is possible. Alternatively, your suggestion's perfectly fine that we just take a brief recess and come back a few minutes before 7 for the joint hearing, after which we could do executive session.
All right, we could also do Select Board, why don't we try to do Select Board notes and go around for, you know, about five minutes, so we'll take a five-minute recess and come back at 7? So does anybody have any comments that they would like to share for Select Board notes? Craig?
I, I just wanted to acknowledge that, that the, the memorial service on, on Saturday morning for 9/11 victims was, was extraordinarily well-done and I was very pleased at the turnout. All of us were there. Majority Leader Cronin was there and Carol Doherty and representatives from both Senator Timmeltie and Senator Brady. It was, it was emotional, it was moving and I think that the Fire Chief, Justin Alexander, did a terrific job. And I, I just want to thank our first responders for always looking out for the community.
Great. Mark?
Craig, you summed that up. It's the, the same, I have the same feeling that you did. I know there was so many people there in support of first responders and you know, the words spoken by Rep. Doherty and Jamie specifically were very moving and, you know, kind of brought things into focus. It was 20, it's been 20 years, which, you know, it's a long time, but we all remember it like it was yesterday. So it was, it was a moving event and, and Chief Alexander did an outstanding job, so thank him for putting all the work into it that he did.
Jamie?
Yeah, same. I'd like to just thank Chief Alexander for, yeah, wonderful start to finish and I think the weather brought us all right back to that, to that day. It couldn't have been a more spitting image of that morning 20 years ago, so outstanding. It was great to be with all of you and all the department, you know, both departments, Fire, Police and the, the rest of the, you know, just, it felt good to be with people and to kind of talk about it and I think it was therapeutic, so. And I think it was therapeutic. So thank you.
Jen?
Agreed. It was really a moving and just beautifully done somber, but somber event. And really important, I think that the the natural theme that came from the morning of continuing to tell the story and keep this as part of our history was really, really important. You know, it's sometimes you step back and like a lot of folks that day were saying, you know, it feels like it was yesterday, yet it's been twenty years. And it's, it's one of those things that you're continually continuously reconciling. So just hats off to Chief Alexander and all those involved in the planning and all the speakers. It's just beautiful.
I'll agree with what everyone said. And I I was really proud to be there with our full board and, you know, everybody approaching this from their perspective and and Connor and our legislators. And it was nice that Mark's daughter didn't drive off in the fire truck. So she was she was testing out the fire truck, which was really great. It was nice to see people there. And, you know, families thinking about, you know, our youngest children, you know, I was talking with the superintendent of schools yesterday. And she said, no, no students in our school system were born when that happened. I mean, it's, it's really, it feels like a blink of an eye to us. My kids were were one and three when that happened. And it just feels like yesterday. So those little ones that were there in attendance, they'll be the next speakers in in another twenty years to talk about remembering it. And, you know, having people like Jamie that really, you know, to be able to express it, that's what we have to do is to continue talking about it and remembering it. And, you know, not forgetting our first responders and the people that did come together that day. So so with that, I am going to say, let's take a recess until seven o'clock and then we'll come back. We're going to have a joint meeting with the Finance Committee to make three appointments.
Before we do, I'm sorry, Connor, I I cannot find the link for the executive session. So could you maybe ask Elizabeth or Mike to send that out again?
We will have that reset to all of you before the hearing is concluded.
Thank you.
We'll be back in a couple of minutes.
Okay, thanks.
Evening, everybody.
Patrick. So Patrick is, for the people at home, Patrick is the Chair of the Finance Committee, and we are bringing in all the members now. Patrick will be opening the meeting for the Finance Committee, and then they'll be adjourning at the end. The Select Board will stay on because we have an executive session that we will be going into. So this is exciting. We have three openings for the Finding Committee tonight, and we have six applicants. Patrick will give us some instructions on how we move forward with that and how we do the interviews. So and the candidates will be brought in one at a time for haven't seen the Finance Committee in a while.
Laying low, keeping our summer open, you know.
Patrick keeps us all locked up. You have to save us.
Great.
That's in the minutes now. So that's good. That's gonna, that's gonna derail later. Right.
Over to you, Patrick.
So we're just waiting on one more. I know we, I did speak to everybody. We have one more person that we're waiting on to join tonight. So we do have quorum. Because I think we only have one, two, three, four of the five. It could possibly be Eastern Fire, one of the members. Oh, yeah, because Tim is the one that we're waiting on.
Okay, we can move Eastern Fire in.
There he is. All right, we have a quorum. So as Doty said, we are going to go through a roll call, right, to confirm that we're all here and to certify that we are opening our section of this meeting from a joint meeting standpoint. We have, as also as Doty said, three openings for the for the Finance Committee. Two that are currently expiring in twenty twenty two, one that expires in twenty twenty three. We're going to go through the people tonight. So let's get started with the roll call and then I'll I'll continue my spiel as to as to the scope. So I'm just going to go on the list. If you could say your name and say present or say here when when I call you out, we'll go through. Denapoli.
You're on mute.
The mute button is the most elusive thing in the world these days.
Sorry, my apologies. Christina Denapoli, present.
Thank you. It's Pietro.
Here.
Thank you. Lamb.
Kelly Lamb, present.
Vamosi.
Vamosi, present.
And Patrick Kellen is present. All right. So with that, we are officially open. So as I said, we have three openings, two for twenty twenty two, one for twenty twenty three. The goal tonight is to go through the applicants. We did get six, which is exciting. This is the most popular call out for for FinCom in a while. And it's because you don't, you probably don't know exactly what's entailing yet. We'll, we'll teach you quick. But we're going to go down the applicants in alphabetical order. My goal tonight is give everyone a minute, right? Just just get a quick read. I'll I'll reiterate this when we start letting people in and just get an idea as to expectations and have people, you know, minute, minute and a half, comment on why they're applying, things of that nature. And then we will wrap up after we make our selections and adjourn for the evening and get everybody back to their their night. So with that, Doty, do you want to, are we gonna let people in alphabetically? Or do you want me to to do that same spiel about what the expectation is and then start letting people in? Is is everyone here? Should we just run down the list?
I think we're missing one that's not here yet. And I do want to mention that all terms expire this April coming up because we're filling positions. This is the finance. So you'll be, the three candidates that are appointed by this joint committee will serve until the next election. So.
At that point, you can run. And then you would fill out that remainder of the term. Thank you for the clarification. I always, I always leave that part big.
Right. So if you want to give us the little preamble and then I I would, and doing it alphabetical, it's like it is noted in the agenda.
Sure. So as I said, we're we're going to give you about a minute. The goal would be to get a read as to why FinCom, right? Why why Finance Committee, why you're applying? What do you feel that you're bringing to the position? And is there the ability, an ability to commit to the time necessary, right? Which is effectively one Wednesday, the second Wednesday of the month, one, one evening at a minimum. And then various other outreach engagements, things like this when we have joint meetings. Overall, can can you commit to that type of of schedule, bearing any other assignments to additional boards and committees? So with that, let's open it up. Let's bring people in. We will let everybody have their their discussion. And then we, as a full body, can comment and discuss. And then we will be going forward with with votes at that point.
Hi, Doty and Patrick. This is Michael Blanchard. So right now, we have three of the six members present. So it'll be slightly out of order on the agenda. Right now, it'll be Brian Donarino, John Olson, and Kevin Pecos. We did hear from the other three, only one last minute, Brett Downset had a professional commitment emergency. So he will not be here tonight. But I'll keep an eye out for the other two who are not here yet. And once we conclude, the three that are here, I'll let you know if anyone else will show up.
Thank you.
Hey, Brian. Welcome to it.
Thank you. Good evening. I listened in on your spiel, so I hope that wasn't against the quorum rules.
Oh, feel free. I was hoping you heard it. So you can, you can give us your your version of it.
Absolutely. So thank you for having me tonight. Just my one minute here. My wife and I moved to Easton in August of twenty nineteen. We're over here on Randall Street, right by the school. You know, and we have two young boys, five and four. Henry just started at Parkview last week. And we really want to give back to the community. We came here because of the resources that you guys have. You know, and we we have a strong commitment to giving back to the community. And we want to do that here. And I want to use my background in in my educational background in finance and my my professional background in managing businesses and making decisions on on utilizing capital to give back to the town and to make sure that we continue the tradition of Easton and expand the the community and the the resources that we give our our in our community here. So if you do hear the marching band in the background, I'll try to mute them, but I'm right next to the field, so it might get loud.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Doty, I had this thought. Do we want to do questions per applicant? Or do we want to? Yeah, I was going to say, so I I misspoke on that one. So if anyone has any questions for for Brian, now is the best time. We can, we can keep this interactive, but obviously keeping in mind that we have other people on the slate that we have to get through. Does anyone have any questions that they'd like to ask?
So are you looking for questions from just the Finance Committee or from from the Select Board as well?
I would, I would assume from the Select Board as well, because it it makes me feel powerful to ask you guys to do something, which would be great. But if that's allowed, then yes. But I would assume that would be, that would be, that would be okay to have have both committees speak and question at this point.
Sure. Usually, as a courtesy, we have the Finance Committee go first. But anybody, you know, if you want to go through each of the Finance Committee and then you want to ask us, or you're the Chair, so you tell us what you want us to do.
Power, my God. All right. So let's, let's, let's go down the line. So I'll go down my my side and then we can, we can pivot over to you guys. So let's start from the top. So Denapoli, any questions?
Sorry, I'm having a problem with my new mouse. Um, at this time, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. It's Pietro.
Hey, Brian. Welcome to the meeting here. Just curious whether in the past you've you've done any sort of volunteer work or civic government types of activities.
Sure, Mike. Thanks for the question. I have not done anything in the civic government side, but you know, volunteering is big in my family. It's been a big part of my life. I went to Boston College back in the late nineties and it really instilled the need to give back. I've done a lot of work with the organizations there. And I still try to give back as much as I can here. I organize when we can. We organize food pantry aid at my office. We do Toys for Tots runs that I I help organize. And and we also are trying to get into the Eastern Food Pantry to to help them out. We do get some time through my employer to go out and volunteer, and I've been trying to organize that. So it's, it's a part of who I am and a part of my kind of family structure.
Cool. Thank you. That's all I had, Patrick.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Lamb.
Hi. Well, welcome to you and your family. I know you said you recently moved here. And I don't really have a question. That was going to be my question about volunteering. But I do have a comment about your application. When I read how you have two young kids that are entering the school system and your goal was really to give back to this community, because you're in it for the long haul. I thought that was really impressive. I thought that was really impressive and I think that's a big part of what we do here, not just utilize our expertise, but really try to develop this community into, you know, the best that it can possibly be. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. I was very excited to have my first vote in the town at the, the vote for the, the new school. That was important to me and and I'm glad that it went the way it should have gone. My kids enjoy seeing the production every day we go by there. We're really hoping one day we see a big toilet going up in the air with, with the cranes, but so far it hasn't happened.
Mr. Vamosi. Thanks, Kelly.
Hi, Brian, and I thank you for volunteering and your willingness to serve. I appreciate you putting yourself out there. I know this is an appointee position, but do you have intentions to potentially run for office later on? A seat later on? Or is your intention to kind of feel it out at first and then see where it goes?
This is my first foray, Timothy, into, to local government. So I would like to get a sense of, of, of what the climate is like. But like I said, I'm in this for the long run. So if it's a good fit for me, I would certainly run for the position for, for a much longer period of time.
Tim, my, my question is effectively, how did you hear about it? Where, where did you find out about this and, and decided to throw your, your hat in the ring?
Facebook, of all places. I don't spend a whole lot of time on there, but I do subscribe to the town news and it was posted on there that you were looking for volunteers. I went through the list of open volunteer spots and with my business background and, and my love for math and numbers and money and banking that were properly planned out fiscally, I thought the findings can use a good fit for me. But there were certainly others on that list that were of interest as well.
So what you're saying is that if this appointment doesn't happen, you have, you have additional things you're, we're going to see you again to jump back in.
Yeah. Yeah, economic development, you know, those types of opportunities that were also listed. I haven't looked at the list recently to see if they've been filled, but.
I'm just always recruiting. So I'm just, I'm always trying to find more people.
Alright.
Excellent. Thank you. Dottie, I'll pass it over to you for any questions on your side.
Sure. We'll start with Craig.
Brian, I, I think I want to reiterate where everybody else has said is thank you for putting yourself out like this. It's important to us to have volunteers who are willing to do that for this community. What is an international fastener manufacturer? I don't know what that, but that is, Brian.
You've been on my LinkedIn, you've been on my LinkedIn profile. So the company I work for is called Bossar. They're based in Zug, Switzerland, and they have offices globally, but what they, what they predominantly do is distribute fasteners. So my, my employer buys and sells fasteners to manufacturers. So we work with a lot of robotics companies. We've actually done some volunteer work with the Eastern Robotics Club up at the high school. We've provided them with some fasteners for their robots. So really what the goal there is to make sure that we're keeping the supply chain moving with the people who are manufacturing things. It's not where I started, but that's where I certainly am now.
Where did you start?
I started in banking. I worked for State Street Financial for about 16 years and took a career pivot after graduating with my master's degree.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Craig.
Mark.
Brian, how are you tonight?
I'm well, thank you.
Excellent. So you know, I'm, I'm lucky number six. There were six people went before me to ask questions and as we go through this, the good questions get taken and now you're like left just scrounging for questions because everybody's already asked them. So a lot of the questions I have are already asked, except for this one. Is there something specific you want to see or address within the town or within the finance committee? As I'm, you know, as I'm hoping that, you know, you've been in town a couple of years. I'm hoping that you've taken in a meeting or two or, you know, poked your head in to, to find out what's going on in town. Is there anything specific you want to address or bring to the table?
It's actually, it's being addressed now. So I, when I came to the town, I knew about the, the PFAS issue and, and that's being addressed. You know, really, I think the, the next step of planning would be maybe at the middle school level, we've got a lot of nice buildings here, the high school, the new elementary school that's going up. You know, maybe it's time to start looking at the middle school and, and finding a way to upgrade that or, or, or consider a different option for, for the students that are going through there. You know, really what I'm, I'm interested in is, you know, we love the free space. We spend a lot of time in the open areas here and we want to make sure that there are many more playgrounds and things like that that can come on board as, as we kind of loosen up space.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Jamie.
Brian, welcome to town and yeah, I was glad to hear you were able to make it out to the, when the school, when we were voting on the school. That project, have you looked closely at that and, and what you see and what you like and, and your children of the age that so in, in January of 23, they may, may very well be going to the new school. Any comments on that?
No, we're excited for it. We, we certainly pride, you know, I'm, I'm a product of public education and I think public education plays a huge role in, in the success of students. And, and I think giving them, and I was talking to, to my son, my younger son about this today, just kind of at, at a four-year-old level, like making sure that students have all the necessary current updated technology, a good learning environment to kind of help them grow. And it sticks with them over a period of time. They want to stay in the community or they want to give back to the community. So we're very excited about the new, the new elementary school. My older one will be roughly in second grade at that time. So he'll get to enjoy it and, and the younger one, we should be in about first grade at that time. So you know, they, they, like I said, we, we walk by there or we drive by there once, once a week, twice a week. So we're really excited to see it go up and we're really excited to see it. You know, be completed and, and give that open space back as well as that new learning environment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Jennifer.
Hi, Brian. Thank you so much for submitting your application and joining us tonight. And I was excited to hear about your connection to fasteners because my first job out of college was actually selling fasteners a long time ago. So that's pretty cool.
That's funny.
Yeah. Yeah. Where I, my first job out at the college was Fastenal. So.
You know them well.
So my question was actually similar remarks, but I was going with the other angle of, first of all, it's really cool to hear you, you know, talking about things and you really have a, a good handle on what's happening in the community and how it ties back to the financial kind of landscape. I was going to ask about, you know, you moved here in 2019. So where you live before, you know, what did you see? What were some of the issues there that really jumped out and resonated with you that kind of helped guide your experience and perspective of what finance committee does or
Sure.
municipal affairs?
Sure. It wasn't a huge move. So we moved from Stoughton, the Cobb's Corner side of Stoughton. It wasn't, wasn't large, but you know, what we noticed, my sister-in-law lives here and she was, you know, telling us about just the response rate. If there's an issue, the way that the response rate is handled, not a lot of, not a lot of red tape. There's not a lot of, you know, bureaucracy. You have an issue related to a public works or something along that line. You make the phone call, the, the item gets taken care of. So it was a little different and it's, it maybe it's a, a result of their size or it's a result of just the strain that they may have financially, but you know, it, it wasn't the same level of response rate. And that's, that's not, you know, not of course police and fire. It's, it's public works and it's related to, to those types of things where we'd have water main breaks and it would take a long time to get these things fixed. So I don't mean to disparage Stoughton. We, we had a, we, we brought our kids home to that town. We lived there for 10 years almost and it was a great place for us at the time, but as we look down the road and we see the issues that they may have financially where they're needing grants and they're needing a lot more outside help to get things done, we just decided maybe it was time to move on and move over to Easton and, and having my sister-in-law be a resident for a period of time and, and our real estate agent be a resident for a period of time. They really helped us, you know, kind of get to those core things that are really important. You know, Stoughton has a lot of outdoor space as does Easton, but it's just these finer tuned things that need to be, you know, needed to be more important for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Patrick, do you want to just mention the, the time commitment and how often you meet? I should know that off the top of my head, but I just want to be sure from your perspective to make sure that Brian, you're able to be able to make it to the meetings.
Yeah, Patrick and Dottie, let me, let me rehash it to you and see if I got it right because I did listen in. If that's okay with you. So you said second Wednesday of the month for roughly one to two hours and then as needed. That shouldn't be much of an issue. We can just work around schedules and, and make sure that, that I'm available as, as needed. So it's not a problem for me.
The, the slight benefit of, of the current state is that look where we are, right? We're all coming in.
Yes.
We're typically remote.
Yeah.
We do oftentimes meet at Proppingham or Town Hall. So we, we actually have a, a room that we will meet to, to do this in person, right? And it's, it's, it's the exact same scenario, right? It's, it's a couple of hours, second Wednesday. The only caveats to that are that there are times during budget season that we might need an extra meeting here or there to discuss something that we haven't gotten to or, you know, go through various different articles that have been brought up for the town. But overall, it's not a dramatic amount of, of time dedication. People can also raise their hands and volunteer to be part of additional boards and, and other committees that are, that are associated, be that, like for instance, I'm part of the school planning. And so there are additional time commitments that you can, you can engage into, but it's, it's pretty, pretty manageable considering, but that big one is, is the second Wednesday.
Yeah, my wife and I are, are big into scheduling. So if, if there are, you know, the more, the more lead time we have, the better off we can schedule things around. You know, what's going on outside of our work lives on a daily basis. So that shouldn't be an issue with me.
Awesome. And luckily by law, we have to tell you at a time in order for it to get posted. So you should have plenty of time.
Alright, great. Well, that's all I had. Thank you so much for being here, Brian.
I think Christina has a question. I think Christina came back around.
Didn't even see your hand up there. Go ahead.
I, I'm sorry. I was a little delayed. I just wanted to say thank you for applying for this volunteer position and I do have one quick question.
Sure.
What, when, when projects or financial needs are brought before the committee, what type of investigative questions would you ask on behalf of our community?
Sure. It, it's certainly going to be project specific, but it's, it's to me, the, the first stop is, you know, what's the return on the investment, right? So if we're talking about a huge financial, you know, a huge financial outlet to repaint fire hydrants a certain color, that's going to take a backseat, right? It's really about what, what, what are we trying to accomplish by spending this money? Is it to draw in new businesses? Is it to draw in new families? Is it to offset property taxes? You know, it's, it's really kind of what's the goal and how do we address that goal properly? That's how I would look at it.
Thank you.
You know, you're welcome. Like I said, each one's got to look, be looked at specifically in kind of the grand context of the strategy that the town may have for its growth and for what it wants to accomplish. But you know, it would be very tactical from my view.
Okay.
So one question for me, would you like me to stay or, or and just put myself on mute or should I come back at a certain time?
I don't know. It's probably more of a Michael question than Dottie.
Michael, we'll put you back into the attendees and you can stay. We'll deliberate after we have the interviews and you'll be the first one to notice.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon, Brian.
Appreciate it. Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Alright, so who are we bringing in next?
That would be Jay Olson.
Great.
Jay.
Good evening.
Welcome. So I'm gonna, I'll, I'll give you the, 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 the quick respiel. So you can, you can speak to it. Essentially, in about a minute before we open the questions, what's, what's brought you here? Why are you applying for the opening, right? Why, why the finance committee? What do you think you bring to the role? What do you feel that you're bringing specifically? And then that time commitment you might have just heard in the last one, if you, if you can speak to, do you feel like that's a, a time commitment you can, you can make? Feel free.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My application may say John Olson, but even my mother, when she's super angry at me these days, only calls me Jay. So everybody in town knows me as Jay Olson. I was born on North Main Street in Easton and I really lived in Easton for most of my adult life. Graduated from all of Rames. Went to UMass Amherst, moved back after I could afford to move back into Easton, live currently on Meeting House Lane. And I just felt like this was a good time to become more involved in town affairs. It's, it's always been something. I've always been very, very proud to be from Easton. I've had a lot of pride in our community. I worked summers for the town of Easton for four years. When I was going through college, I loved the people that worked for the Department of Public Works, who I worked very closely with during that time. I've raised a son in town who went through Eastern schools, who's now on to Bryant and studying finance. So maybe I could pull upon some of his knowledge that he's gaining at Bryant currently. And it just seemed like at a good point in my life to become more invested. And I've been inspired by several people that I've seen volunteer around town and just the commitment and the, the passion they have for the work that they've done. I'm a vice president at the Old Colony Y, mostly out of Brockton. I have oversight of about $10 million worth of state contracts with three different state departments, but I certainly don't consider myself a finance expert. I, I, I muddled through and I learned where I can learn. And when this opportunity presented by, presented itself, it just seemed like a really good, a really good time and place for me to get more involved with, with the town affairs.
Thanks, Jay. So as a fellow UMass alumni, I was an English major, so the muddle through finance piece, I understand. The question I would ask is that essentially why now specifically? Like what, what is it about, you know, jumping in at this point that you, you did say, obviously there's some inspiration about other people in town, but is there something specific that's bringing you to this, this point right now that, that you, you could share?
I think I've always volunteered for things that I'm, been passionate about at certain periods of time. So I think for the past, having a 20-year-old at this point who's now off to college, you know, it was volunteering with school trips. It was volunteering with school sports. It was volunteering in my Holy Cross Parish, among other things. So I think at this point, you know, I've done a good job. He's off to college. Now it's time to maybe give back a little bit more in general to the town.
Thank you, sir. Alright, I will go down my list of, of characters here. Christina.
Hi, Jay. It's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Thank you for, for taking the time and volunteering. I think it's very important when you live in a community to be part of the community. Based on your experience, there are many projects and financial requests that come before the board, the finance committee. What, what kind of investigative questions would you ask on behalf of the community members?
So I, I'll, I'll just admit, I was here for Brian's answer and Brian knocked it out of the park. So I could just steal Brian's answer. But truth be told, I, I mean, to me, the schools are very important. To me, a, a good, strong public school system is the lifeblood of any town. I think Eastern should be very proud of the school system it has. And I think, you know, the, the projects that we have moving forward, almost every, not as often as I used to run by the police station in the new school, but I still run by there a couple of times a week. It's just amazing to see that whole project going up. So to me, I think the schools would be my biggest passion and just, and just recognizing how important it is for everything else in town and just to have a great, strong public school system that encourages young, growing families to want to move to this community.
Okay, thank you.
Getting back to my mute. Michael.
Now, how's it going, Jay? Thank you so much for stepping up here. You were saying before that you, you've always wanted to, not wanted to, you've always have stepped up and volunteered things that were important. And I'm going to apologize if I, if I missed you say, but what were some of the things that you've volunteered for in the past? You were talking to Patrick. I, I just didn't catch sort of specifically what it was.
No, that's okay. I'm happy to share. So my son was a pretty decent athlete going through school. So I volunteered from a very young age with school sports, whether it was town run or, you know, so, summer league and travel leagues. And that was a really big priority. I always volunteered for class trips and class events. As we know, as I said earlier, the public schools are very important to me and volunteering to help out with any types of activities with that. He played varsity sports for four years. So there's also a lot of volunteering and support for, for even on the varsity level. I volunteered at my Holy Cross Parish. I was a leader of several of the confirmation programs, which there's an assignment you don't want to volunteer for all the time. Getting the kids interested for, for four years worth of confirmation training at Holy Cross was quite an adventure. And this comes from somebody who works with at-risk adolescents. So I think those have been the major areas where I volunteered in the past. And again, now is an opportunity to, I think, more volunteer on an adult level with town affairs and just to become more active and involved with my community.
Awesome. I, I just came from coaching soccer, so I'm with you, man. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Kelly, you're up.
Hi, hi, Jay. Thank you so much for being here today. I was.
I was really impressed when I saw your resume as well with the thirty years of work in nonprofit industry. I mean, clearly you're someone that is very drawn to serving communities, and so I guess I was just wondering a little bit about what drives you. And what has drawn you to this lifelong dedication to nonprofits and service?
Thanks, Kelly. Uh, both my parents were educators. My father was a school adjustment counselor for Brockton Public Schools for forty years. My mother was an English as a second language teacher at Brockton High School, and I think we were always from a very young age encouraged to volunteer and give back. And be part of our community and be active. To this day, my dad will never get involved with town politics. I don't know why, but he does volunteer with Kenwood on a weekly basis at the food pantry. That's his passion, as well as, uh, the St. Vincent de Paul Society. It's just always been, it's just something I've grown up with, it's something I respect. And it's something I think more people should take an interest in.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Uh, over to Tim.
Hi, Jay. Just wanted to say, uh, thanks for volunteering. Thanks for coming out tonight. I'm, I'm actually going to, uh, to, uh, pass my questions on. You got a lot of questions to go, but I thank you for being here today. Thanks for volunteering.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, sir. Uh, that's it for our side. Over to you, Dottie.
I, I have known Jay Olson for over twenty years, worked with him. When I worked with the Department of Youth Services and he at the Y, so I don't have any questions. I'm just excited that he's. Stepped up and, and, uh, offered to, uh, to assume a role, um, in, on the finance committee.
Mark?
Hey, Jay, how are you?
Very good, Mark.
Excellent. Um, you know, earlier in the conversation, uh, I think, you know, you and, you and Patrick have mentioned. Your expertise on finance and, uh, you know, one of the things I want to mention, but well. It, it's, it's interesting because I was on the finance committee for a number of years and I am not a financial expert, right? And I was actually chair of that board. And one of the things that I really want to point out about what the finance committee does, and guys, correct me if I'm wrong. But you have a ten thousand-foot view of every department, and it's not just about the finances. It really is about understanding operations. It's about understanding logistics. It's about, i- it's about bringing in an outside perspective. Where, you know, everybody becomes so focused on something that at times they lose, you know, they, 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 uh, what's that saying? The forest through the trees. Um, so having, uh, an operational perspective is really valuable on that committee. Because it kind of, you know, brings things into focus. Uh, you, vice president, uh, over at Old Colony. I'm guessing you have a ten thousand-foot view. I'm guessing you have incredible operations and logistical experience that you can bring to the table. And share that outside perspective. So I, you know, when I hear those things, I just, I want, I don't, I want you to know that. Your, what you bring to the table is, it's, it's not just about finances here, as silly as that sounds, and guys, correct me if I'm wrong. But my question though is, uh, similar to the question I had before. Is there anything specific you want to see or address within the finance committee as it pertains to Eastern?
I'm not sure that I have a direct answer to that direct question, Mark, and I appreciate the question. I think one of the things that interested me is I did some research with a member who had stepped down from this committee was exactly what you discussed. He shared with me that opportunity to look, um, I think at one point he did some form of audit of public works. And it was really insightful to him to kind of see how the town operates behind the scenes and the limitations and the strengths and the overall. Just, just appreciation he had for how departments work, uh, that maybe from the outside, it looks fairly simple. And once he gets inside, you recognize complexities that you never knew existed. And again, it, it, to me, I'm interested in that. I collaborated as part of my job a little bit with Eastern Police Department on some issues. I worked for Public Works for a number of years and really enjoyed my time, uh, there just as summer help. And again, I'm very passionate about the schools continuing to do well in the town. So that was what really made me interested. Like, I, I don't want to really do. Uh, I'm, I don't want to portray, uh, uh, pretend that, um, maybe as talented as, uh, Bryant is. Brian is in, uh, some of his finance answers, but I do think, uh, that I would be a welcome addition. And I especially look forward to maybe that opportunity to kind of view departments from that ten thousand-foot level.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jamie.
You had me at UMass. I'm an Eisenberg alum, so, now, um, that, I, I've heard some wonderful things. And I think I've gathered that you grew up in the Brockton area. So, that you grew up in.
No, I, I actually grew up on North Main Street. Um, I was, I was born in Brockton only because we don't have a hospital here yet, so, uh, aside from that. I've been in Eastern pretty much for a whole life.
Okay. And if you've got Craig's endorsement. It would be, uh.
You didn't say that exactly, Jamie.
And I'm hoping Jen grills you, so I'm gonna let her go.
Thank you so much for, and your, your background is just so interesting, and I love listening to your answers. One of the things that has kind of resonated with me, they've heard you talk, is that when you come into finance committee with a background. That may not be like focused on finance, sometimes it's a little hard to reconcile that with the lens we're focusing on is finance. But you're being asked to kind of weigh in or have a perspective on issues that may not be strictly financial. And it's kind of hard, like, how would you reconcile that, whether it may be an environmental issue or a social issue where that part of you is going, but, but, but. But the reality is that you're here to be part of the, the group that is weighing in this from a more of a financial lens. And I asked this, this has been a chat, this was a challenge for me in finance committee, so.
No, I, I assume it would be a challenge, Jen, and I, I, it sounds like a challenge, and I, I would welcome the challenge, I think, you know. I think I would rely upon my managerial experience, like, I really am a believer in taking things step by step and taking things slowly when you don't need to understand them. And asking a lot of questions, so, um, I know Craig alluded to twenty years' experience working with Craig. Craig was a mentor of mine. And I did pick his brain on a number of issues and still continue to do this to this day, as I bumped into him at the library the other day. So, um, I think it's important to know what you know and also to, important to know what you don't know, and to kind of take those things slowly. And be open-minded and learn, uh, learn what you need to learn in order to make informed decisions. I, I think it's a great question, Jen. I wish I had an even better answer, uh, but.
That's a fantastic answer, so.
So now we're down to me. Um, so Jay, my question will be the same thing about, um, being able to make it to the meetings. You heard the dates that they meet and the timeframe for that. Do you have any problem with being able to commit to getting to the meetings?
No, I think that's why, I think, you know, I think I'm at that point in my life where that's not a major concern. When you're, when you're running around after kids in high school or even, even during, uh, even during COVID college, uh, that would have been more of a concern. But, uh, right now I can easily make that. I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be sitting here before you if I wasn't willing to make that commitment, uh, happily.
Okay, great. And so thank you for throwing your hat in the ring on this as well. And, um, you will be moved back into the attendees while we finish up the interviews.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay.
So it looks like we have, um, one more of the candidates that will be moved into the, um, into the presenter section. And we do have somebody, some names in there, people that I don't recognize, and sometimes, um, you, somebody might be using a different computer with a different name. So if you are somebody who is here for the interview, um, please raise your hand or put a note in the Q and A so that I don't overlook you. So I think we'll be moving in Kevin Pecos next.
Hello?
Hi, Kevin.
Hi. I had a, uh, some sort of technical difficulty. My apologies. I suddenly went into, uh, cyberspace. But, um, happy to be back with you. It's a pleasure to, to join you all and thank you, uh, for all the public service that you all give. Most wonderful. And it's fantastic to see that you've got some really excellent candidates, um, to serve in these vacancies. Not always easy, uh, to find volunteers that'll come forward, and, um, community is blessed to have six really good people that, uh, that'll like to do this. So that's great. Um, I guess I have, um, now about forty-five seconds to tell you why I would like to. Why have, why have volunteered for this. I came to Eastern, as you probably know, around thirty-six, thirty-seven years ago, to accept the position of town administrator. Intending to do one or two terms, three or six years, and then leave and continue to build my career. And here I am thirty-six or thirty-seven years ago, still living here, still very, very pleased and happy to be living here, having raised my family here. And now frankly calling Eastern home and probably always will. It's, uh, as you all know, this is a beautiful, incredible community, rich in, uh, historical assets and natural resources. And it's a beautiful and wonderful place to live, and my wife and I couldn't be happier now that we're empty nesters. And that is the heart of, um, why I would, uh, have volunteered to serve, because I now have time. I'm semi-retired. I have a master's degree in public administration with a concentration in public finance. Um, I have done. Forty-plus years of service, uh, to the public sector as an elected official, an appointed official, a volunteer. And a, and an enormous variety of roles in municipal government. And, um, I can tell you with complete candor that I could not love municipal government or public service more indeed. My entire public life has been devoted to public service, both as a participant, participant in local government. And as a soldier, part-time, uh, in the National Guard and several active duty stints, including a couple in Afghanistan not long ago. So, uh, once I retired in two thousand thirteen, um, I started to do lots more volunteer work. And frankly, looked for a way to kind of get involved in, in Eastern, and since we all kind of seek to. Do things that were trained and experienced in, in the hope that we might be helpful. Um, I kind of waited in the hope there'd be a vacancy on FinCom, because that probably is where the greatest. Bulk of my expertise is in municipal government. And when I read in the newsletter that this, uh, these vacancies were available, I decided. After I got permission by the way from my wife, my, uh, lovely wife of some forty-six years, uh, she gave me permission. I think primarily because that'll make sure that I'm out at least one night a week and there will be no competition for the TV clicker. She'll get all her shows at least that one night. So I'm very happy to, to put my name, uh, into consideration. And, um, would love to serve.
Thanks, Kevin. You answered my question about why you're applying, my, my standard opener. So I'm gonna, I'll, I'll see if anything else comes up for me, but I'm gonna pivot directly over to Christina. Christina, take it away.
Hi, Kevin. Thank you for, uh, reaching out and joining us tonight. I have, as you know, serving on committees in the past, that there are various projects and financial requests that come before us. Seeking our support and in, um, what type of investigative questions would you ask to, to base your decision? While representing the people of the community, the, the members of the community?
Well, that's a complex question. Every proposal or enterprise of any type that comes before the finance committee for consideration. Is going to yield a different kind of investigative analysis, uh, whether it's a, a new health insurance initiative. Or whether it's a capital project initiative. So I can't, you know, give you the specific of, of, um, of how, what questions I would ask. I would say to you that years and years ago, I was a future problem solver coach for the Eastern school system. And did that when my boys were growing up and enjoyed it immensely. I learned a methodology that future problem solving taught. And it's now got a different name, but it's essentially the same thing. And I actually adapted the future problem solving methodology. Being taught to high school kids, um, as a methodology that was profoundly useful, um, in any endeavor, including my own as a town manager. And, um, that is still the methodology that I use when approaching, uh, consideration of any issue. You know, trying to develop decision packages and, uh, look at the, uh, look at the substance of the question at hand. And develop alternatives to it and, you know, the kind, so I kind of think of it that way. I've got a real system. But in terms of specifically how I would look at any particular project or initiative, it really bears on what that specific project is. I'm not dodging the question. Throw one at me and I'll give you.
I think it's a difficult question, and I was just curious how, how you would answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Uh, over Mike.
Hey, Kevin. Nice to meet you, and thank you for stepping up, what it apparently is yet again. Um, it's the, the question I've been asking, uh, e- e- each person, you, you've answered, uh, ten times over. And I'll just tip my hat to you and offer gratitude for the amount of, uh, public service you've offered everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That's, means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, Kelly.
Hi, Kevin.
Hi.
I just want to start by thanking you for your service to this town and for your service to this country. I see that you have a lot of years of experience, um, in town administration, and so I guess I'm just wondering what draws you specifically. To the, uh, finance committee since really you could be on any committee.
Well, as I said. Virtually anything in municipal government is fascinating to me and interesting, but I think when we try to serve a community. And I very much feel part, you know, communities, a town is not a town, it's a community. It's a bunch of people trying to advance the, the interests of every citizen. And you sort of try to make the contribution more maybe you think you might make the best contribution by virtue of the things you've done before. Experience and, in my case, training. Um, so I would enjoy being on the Conservation Commission. And in fact, I was on a Conservation Commission in North Reading when I started my career forty-plus years ago. Um, I was an elected selectman, and all those things are wonderful, and I had a great, great, wonderful, fun time doing it. But over the years, my interest really became far more focused in the area of municipal finance. Lettered widely in the subject matter, published, and, um, that's really where my expertise is. So if I can help in Eastern, I think that's the niche, uh, that I can most, um, beneficially occupy, uh, to help the community. And so when the vacancies came along, it just seemed logical to, you know, put my candidacy in front of you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Tim, over to you.
Hi, Kevin. Thanks for coming out tonight, and, um, I just want to, uh, express like many others tonight, thank you for your, uh, your prior service and, uh, your service to your country. So I guess, uh, my standard question kind of is, I know this is, uh, you, you've been in, um, in the, in the public eye for a long time, and you're stepping up to volunteer yet again. Is this, is it in your intention to, um, stay as an appointee, or would you, uh, like to further this along for a longer term? And be looking towards, uh, election again down the road?
Well, I would, I would not be seeking, uh, to serve unless I were interested in serving for a longer period of time. Than the one or two-year terms available. So yes, I would plan to run, and after all, how much fun is it to campaign? Goodness knows, all you folks do it, and, um, jeez, it's just such a good time. I haven't run a campaign since my last campaign for selectmen in North Reading. And, uh, I'm embarrassed to tell you how many years ago that was, thirty-some plus, I know that. But I ran four times, was unsuccessful the first time, and imprudently listened, uh, to members of my family and friends who said, run again, you almost got there. So I did and ran three successful campaigns for election and reelection. And campaigning really can be fun. It really can be fun. So, uh, I have no idea if I can get elected or not. But I would intend to run, um, and put my best foot forward and, you know, try to stay on the finance committee for a period of time. How long? I haven't got any idea. But to be perfectly honest with you, after serving for a year or two, I would turn to my colleagues on the finance committee, and I would frankly ask. Was my participation beneficial? Was it helpful? Uh, did I serve a useful function? And if the answer is yeah, Kev, you did, then, then I would offer myself as a candidate. Uh, if there was a different answer, well, then, you know, maybe I'd go play checkers. That might be fun, too.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, with that, we'll, uh, we'll pass over to Dottie.
Craig, you're up.
Good evening, Kevin. How are you tonight?
Hi, Craig. How are you?
Good, good. I, I just want to thank you for, um, for putting your hat in the ring. Um, I appreciate it. I don't have any specific questions. Because you've been asked all of them and you've answered all of them, so, um, it's nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Thanks, Craig. Mark?
Hello, Mr. Pecos. How are you?
Good, Mark. Thank you.
Excellent. So, uh, you know, I've seen your resume, um, and I know you've, you've worked, uh, in a lot of different facets. And you've worked, worked in this town, you were employed by this town. Um, and through that employment and your service to this town, you've worked with all the departments. Right? So you, you, you know, I, I can't ask a question specific that you don't have some basis of knowledge for, and might even be an expert. And you've also been on the outside as an observer, and I have no doubt that while you were on the outside as an observer, you were probably a pretty astute observer. As to what was going on. So my question is, uh, as an. So my question is uh as an astute observer now looking in uh is there something you you see or want to address or is there anything in particular?
Well, thank you for your kind words I I you know I I would hope I was would be an educated observer I don't really see it that way I see it as I'm a citizen with a little bit of training and some experience. But there's always new things to learn that's for sure and I've learned things constantly. I would not presume to tell you that I have a particular area where I I think um improvement is needed or or this uh there's something uh specific that I that I think um I would have an interest in. I think it's much rather the case um you know I think the finance committee is part of um an effective functioning town government. Um part of a team the goal of which is to try to achieve consensus on the budget and present a budget to the people at town meeting. Which is unanimous in all aspects because we've worked hard to make it so. Um that means working out differences and disagreements uh in a way that creates that consensus and presents it to the people that way. Town meetings are complex enough without having the boards disagree so if the boards can uh the the key players the board of selectmen finance committee the town manager and the department heads and and elected and appointed volunteers in the departments can present a budget which is well thought out constructed and represents a consensus then I think we've done a tremendous service to the community. Um so really that's kind of what my interest is and along the way there'll be some interesting and I'm sure complex uh fascinating challenges and specific projects that FinCom has asked to comment on and I would look forward to those things as well but by and large I gotta tell you folks and I'm not you know trying to pump up anybody in order to improve my candidacy I say this with all sincerity I'm really too old to to engage in false flattery. You folks are doing a great job uh with the town government I I think you know you you got a great town manager in Connor um great town administrator and a wonderful staff I I know a lot of them and see them occasionally I'm in the building. I was in there a few weeks ago in the assessor's office uh for my veterans uh whatever that uh thing is on taxes and I I it's just always such a pleasant experience to be in the building and see folks and you guys are doing a great job. Uh so I don't have anything specific Mark uh you know that that I could comment on. I would just simply tell you um you've got a great team you're doing good work and I'd love to be part of it.
Thank you.
Thanks Mark Jamie.
Yeah, thank you uh for for coming out and um let me ask when when you were town administrator Eastern was very different back then obviously different town can you give us just a couple and you know a little snapshot of what you know what was a challenge you had and maybe one was something very positive that uh you hadn't and what were the years?
Well, yes I'm sorry.
I was yeah I was just making sure you understood that I'm curious what years you were uh town administrator.
Uh let's see it's from I think nineteen eighty-eight to two thousand three. If I've got those dates right um and in terms of fascinating things Eastern is really more from a community where back in the eighties and nineties we were a very rapidly growing community and the challenge was to control growth and to and to have growth happen while so we could take advantage of the the tax opportunities while still maintaining the character of the community that was a significant challenge and I'm I'm very proud of the work that we all did collectively the elected and appointed officials to basically maintain the character of Eastern through that very tumultuous time so that Eastern looks like the community it looks like today which is obviously a community I love because we're still here. So that was a a significant challenge the other thing was um during my uh tenancy as uh town administrator um I was very proud of the fact that we built I think an employee workforce and particularly a management team that was the envy of essentially every community in the Commonwealth of Mass and indeed um we received the ultimate award for the creation of that management team that the state confers the Commonwealth of Mass actually confers an award annually and it was almost invariably for state employees and in the very year that um we received the award it was the very first time a municipal official had received it and it really was for the creation of that team. It was my great joy uh to lead that team and the and to be an integral part of it. And uh to this day I look back at my life and my career and I don't think anything was ever more satisfying than those uh thirteen fifteen odd years that I served in Eastern it was uh great fun wonderful satisfaction and we did wonderful work together to help the community be what it is today.
Thank you, thank you for that answer.
Jen Stacy.
Uh thank you so much for your service and thank you for coming tonight. Um my question is just around what you see as some of the biggest challenges on the horizon um from our financial lens for the community.
Well, probably the biggest challenge that every community is going to have um I just wrapped up a a stint as a chief financial officer for a community up in the North Shore interim I do a lot of interim work. And um had a good look at kind of the status of municipal finances it looks uh very very presently. You know, we had a a pretty good run with the CARES Act and now we've got the um American Rescue Act funds that are helping cities and towns. But there is yet a significant challenge in how we are going to balance our budgets going forward. There's greater and greater pressure being placed on municipal government uh to make limited resources meet. Uh we still work with the tax limiting uh proposition two and a half. And while we're getting a lot of external revenue from those sources that revenue will run out it's temporal in nature and it will not be there. And you can't fashion a budget in reliance of those revenues being there you gotta can't you've gotta craft the budget which doesn't rely on that revenue in the future I see that as the single most significant challenge. And going along with that is the is the challenge of economic development in order to be able to still have robust town services and not put the burden of a hundred percent of that on the tax on the property taxpayers the homeowners but be able to diversify that tax person tax burden with commercial and industrial development again you've done a great job with it the extension of the sewer system is really going to facilitate some of that economic development. Uh so kudos to all of you you know for a very thoughtful project um but I think that's the single most significant challenge.
Thanks Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so uh my question again is that you would uh be able to fulfill coming to the meetings at the uh at the frequency that they they are held.
My wife is standing a little ways behind me with the clicker and she's hoping that that you will make that choice.
Yes.
Yeah, I I the you know I'm so I'm semi-retired at this point and service is my passion I'm on the board of directors for the Old Colony Y um and the gentleman you had just before me by the way is an outstanding candidate I know him and he'd be a great member of the finance committee. I hope he's still on and heard me say that um because he really is a great great administrator be great. I'm on the old uh the Mayflower Board of Directors for the Boy Scouts that serves this area. Um I do projects for the um Home for Little Wanderers I was an orphan myself for five years before I was adopted. So I do a lot of volunteer work and projects for them. My passion now at this point in my life is to do all the things that I didn't have time for when I was raising my family. And volunteer work is really my passion and I do a little bit of consulting and lots of pro bono work for cities and towns projects for them so yes I have plenty of time lots and lots of time I just don't want to fill that time by listening to my voice echo in my home. To fill it with meaningful things um you know that give back to the community I live in and uh and frankly the country I do a lot of work with veterans too uh so that's that's my passion and uh if you've got other candidates that you think fill the bill um really well and excellent I I won't be at all um heartstruck that I didn't make it I I would love to do the service for you but I'm much more interested in the success of Eastern um and I just again feel wonderful that you got so many good candidates and I thank you again from the bottom of my heart for the volunteer work you did I know how difficult it is having done it for so long and really I applaud out of you you're just doing a great job so good luck it's a tough this uh decision I'm sure but um best of luck with it.
Well, thank you we appreciate you being here and thank you for your service my son's serving in the Navy right now uh Jamie's a veteran so we do have a special fondness in in our uh in our heart for those that serve so we appreciate that.
Please give him my best wishes to say uh to stay well and safe.
I will, thank you.
Pleasure everybody thank you thank you so much.
Thank you Kevin.
Take care.
So what I would say is uh we have had some really great interviews tonight. Um concerned that a couple of the members um the the applicants were not able to make it tonight and I'm worried if there was a communication issue. And where we did have such great response to it um I would be I would be willing to entertain moving this out until we could get the other three applicants to um to come and interview with us and do that at our next meeting if that was something that the rest of the group was amenable to.
If I could add to that Dottie um I do agree with that because those three people we just heard were phenomenal. But I also know there's there's a tax accountant who owns his own company I also know there's a vice president of tax for a major uh worldwide organization like there's a lot of there's some so much talent that we haven't heard from.
Right.
That's how I feel.
And I think that when we look you know I know that with the select board when we look at our candidates we're looking for diversity not just in cultural diversity but in age gender ability um socio-economic do people rent do people own how long have they lived here are they new? Do they have young kids do do they have older kids we try to balance that out on our boards and committees because we want to get the best perspective from uh from people and I think that even on our select board we have a very um you you know diverse backgrounds and ages and and you know good balance so that'd be something that I'd be really looking to see from the other candidates as well. So if every if anybody else has any comments uh let me know otherwise if somebody'd like to make a motion to continue this to our next meeting and uh reconvene for the following three the final three interviews.
Yeah I would I would I would appreciate that I I think it's very important to do that because I as as Mark said there's some really talented people that we haven't had a chance to talk to and I I would rather do that have that opportunity than make a decision tonight.
The finance committee motion to move this to next week next board meeting to uh consider the other three candidates.
One question on that just to make sure I know this procedurally do we have to make our own independent motion or is it just a general motion I want to make sure that I'm doing this the right way?
Why don't we uh each make our own motion and for the finance committee and the select board and that way we cover all the bases on that. So if you if uh so Mike just made the motion for the finance committee.
Do we have a second for the finance committee?
I'll see second.
All right, let's go down the list uh Christina.
Wait a minute I just wanted to keep that clear we have a a new um secretary who's recording the minute so um DePietro and then Vamosi was the second.
Thank you Dottie.
Thanks.
Uh so down the list uh Christina.
Christina Denapoli yes.
Uh Mike.
Yes.
Lamb.
Kay Lamb yes.
Vamosi.
Vamosi is yes.
And I will vote yes it's a good idea.
Okay, great and do I get a motion from the select board side?
So moved Barger.
Second Lamb.
So Barger Lamb back to you Craig.
Barger yes.
Lamb yes.
Devens yes.
AC yes.
Enful Janetti yes and just to also add we really appreciate it and love it when new faces come before the committee and especially when there is a lot of enthusiasm but we do have openings for various committees and I always like to reach out if you know unfortunately we can't appoint everyone uh to any open position but I like to reach out afterwards because sometimes there's a better fit for a different committee so I just want to recognize that um these are really hard decisions because these are people they're our neighbors they're our friends and they're usually people with tons of um expertise experience and enthusiasm. So um it's probably going to make it harder for us when we have the next set of interviews but I'm really appreciate everybody for uh wanting to volunteer and it makes me so excited that is what makes Eastern great is all the volunteers that we have. So with that if you want to make a motion to adjourn Patrick we still have continued business and uh the select board will stay on.
Does anyone want to make a finance committee motion to adjourn? Mike you're on mute I knew you were trying to say it.
Motion to adjourn DePietro.
Can I have a second please?
Second Denapoli.
Thank you it's good on the list uh Denapoli.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Lamb.
Lamb yes.
Vamosi.
Vamosi yes.
And Helen is yes we are adjourned thanks everybody we will see you again soon.
Good night guys.
Okay and the last order of business that we have is an executive session under purpose three of mass general law chapter thirty A subsection twenty-one A to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating provision of the public body and the chair so declares to discuss litigation relating to CTA Construction Managers LLC versus the town of Rockland etc Plymouth uh Superior Court Civil Action number two one eight three C V zero zero two five four. So if um this if I could get a motion to adjourn to a motion to enter executive session not to return to open session.
So moved Barger.
Second Lamb.
That's Barger and Lamb and then this is a roll call vote.
Barger yes.
Lamb yes.
Devens yes.
Stacy yes.
And full Janetti yes so we um will uh exit this Zoom and then log back into executive session Zoom. Everyone has that email thanks.